All this meeting to order, regular meeting of Grand Forks City Council. I forgot my glasses tonight, so you might take a moment to read them. First item of business is the adoption of the agenda for today, March 4th. I have a motion, Commissioner Smith. Second by Councilor Kendall, all those in favor? Those carry. February the 18th, special meeting minutes. Motion to adopt, Councilor Doherty, Councilor Kendall, all those in favor? And a regular meeting of February 18th. Motion to adopt, oh, thank you. Councilor Smith. Second, Councilor Kendall, all those in favor? Gee, these are just like mine. And the final one is the February 18th primary committee meeting minutes. Recommendations contained here in adoption. Councilor Doherty, Councilor Smith, all those in favor? We have no petitions. And we're down to council reports, and I'll start with Councilor Shag.
I have no report for this meeting.
All right, thank you, Councilor Doherty.
Yes, I just got one report. I attend the budget meeting last week, and I attend a meeting at the GFI. That's what we need quite to work for.
Thank you.
You can call this.
I can see most of this, it's not that bad.
All right, here we go. Council report. Boy, that was fast. Okay. I'll start on my report with the regular monthly board meeting for the Grand Forks and District Public Library on February 20th. Now, elections are slated for the upcoming AGM on March the 6th, and the nominations for board members for 2013 were closed at this public meeting. They did have, the following candidates have been accepted and approved, with four vacancies on the board coming up. They have Elise Rimby from Area D, they have David Rosedeck from Christina Lake, Area C, Mr. Wayne Hahn from Grand Forks, and Martin Dumay from Area D. So the AGM once again is March the 6th at 7:00 PM at the library, and they'll be serving retraining. I just wanted to report that, this is something I found very interesting, I've always wanted to learn, is sign language. And the library is holding sign language training every Tuesday from 12 to 1:00. So, they did start on February the 19th, but it's going to be running every Tuesday up until April the 9th, and I understand it's been quite popular, so they're looking at extending it beyond April the 9th. So, that's such a public library.
American Sign Language?
Well, I'm French Sign Language.
Oh, American Sign Language.
I'll check it.
It's a certain type of sign.
I'm sure it is. It is. We'll find it. Well, since we're in Canada. February the 19th, Environment Committee met, the Nephilometer Air Quality Group volunteers, and it was a conference call with the University of Victoria's Eleanor Seaton and A.J. Downey from the Ministry of Environment was also on the call, from the Nelson office. Basically, why we had the conference call is we wanted to determine the next move with the nephelometer monitoring that we've been doing around the community, because it's supposed to go back to the university this spring. But the stakeholders actually evaluated the existing NEF maps to date that we have, and we have the opportunity to keep the nephelometer for another year. The university has said we can keep it for another year. We evaluated that it's probably going to be a primary tool to incorporate into educating the public with the information on air quality issues that we have in our community, and for example, on February the 13th, there was an agricultural burn in Area D, and it was significant smoke that lingered over the city, and that sent the nephelometer sky high. It went right off the map. So, as Eleanor says, we wanted to know if it actually can identify different particulates, but that doesn't. It's the TM on top of the City Hall that does that. What the nephelometer tells you is, if you've got a situation in your community like the agricultural burning that's impacting your community, then you can educate and work with your Area D representative, or look at addressing the bylaw regarding outdoor burning. So, it's going to be an education tool, and it'll probably form part of the summer student's job if we're successful with a Canada summer job application. What Mr. Downey was able to tell us is that the TM on top of the City Hall is going to be replaced, probably within the next year. The new instrument will be set up beside the existing one, and for some time it'll provide and detect any variables between the two instruments, and evaluate why. So, the minutes of the February 19th meeting will be presented to the Environment Committee on March 21st, with recommendations to be brought forward to council from this meeting. On February 21st was the regular Citizens on Patrol meeting, and volunteer recruitment is underway right now, and those interested are invited to attend the March meeting at the RCMP detachment at 7:00 PM on the 21st. February 22nd, I attended the 8th Annual No Boundaries Film Festival, with 14 documentaries presented over three days. It was very well attended, and a couple of documentaries really stood out. They stood out for two reasons. They were called Hooked on Growth, which talked about sustainable civilization and the fact that our population in this world is growing very, very quickly. I think we can all remember in the 60s, population was 4 billion. Today, 2011, the United Nations said we were at 7 billion. So, in 50 years, they predict by 2050, we will double our population again. Where 14 million people are going to live and sustain themselves is going to be very interesting, especially when we look at environmental issues that are even facing us today, as far as even water. Anyway, the other documentary was called The Carbon Rush, and the reason why I bring this up is, the comments that I heard that were showed about during the event was, "I wish City Council could see this." So, the carbon rush, I'm going to see if I can possibly find out more about it, and see if we can get a copy of it, or whatever, and so that we can have a look at it. Basically, it's what happens when we manipulate markets to solve a climate crisis. Who stands to gain and who stands to suffer? So, the carbon offsets that we're buying, you know, ourselves, they don't understand this. They really don't understand this.
Our citizens don't?
They don't. Well, they're the ones in the audience, you know? So, you know, they think it's all a manipulative money grab.
Mr. Mayor, just to respond to that, the lady that was here that was representing the Dale Littlejohn, and I can't remember the lady's name, she said that she would be coming back to talk to us this year about how we could explain that better, and look at a local project that the money could be allocated to, rather than the Darkwoods project, where we really had two options this year, either the Darkwoods or the Pacific Carbon Trust. And she was suggesting that they would come back and be able to speak to us to help us maybe develop something in our local area.
And that's an excellent idea, Your Worship, because honestly, they don't understand.
We needed Joe Tangello the other day at the meeting here, he was commenting on the Darkwoods choice in the city.
Yes, yes. And thank goodness it's only for one year, so we have an opportunity to have something local possible. On February 27th, we had the city's 2013 Budget Consultation Open House, which I attended here with other members of council, and it was good to see the gallery full, and everyone, you know, I thank everyone for taking the time out to attend, it's nice to see. I attended the regional local government, AKBLG, meeting in Invermere on March the 2nd, and the executive were reviewing the 19 resolutions that came before them throughout the region. The resolutions will be circulated to the submitting communities with comments from AKBLG and UBCM, and the resolutions will be on the floor of the AKBLG AGM Conference on Friday, April the 19th, at 8:15 AM in the morning. This year's conference is, it won't be on Saturday, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, but it's actually Tuesday afternoon is late registration, so it's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, instead of Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, or something like that. That's good to know. So, hopefully you're all registered.
Yep.
And of course, we know about the electoral Area D Town Hall meeting tonight, across the hall, across the way at the seniors' hall, so hopefully everyone can make an effort to get over to see what's happening there. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Council. Councilor Kendall.
Thank you, Worship. I attended a meeting of the Grand Forks ATV Club, they had a dinner and fun night. The ATV Club is actively working on several initiatives, which include mapping of several trails in the area, GPS mapping. They made a very good presentations from the ATV Club of BC, and the tourism potential for ATVing in the area has been demonstrated to be significant, and they've done a lot of really good work on promoting that. Mr. Langdon's comments at the Committee of the Hole today, I thought were very good with the fact that the Trail Society and the ATV Club are getting together to come up with a mutually beneficial plan for everyone today to use these trails, and I think that's a key to making things work here. I attended, along with other members of council, the public open house to review the 2013 budget. The meeting was well-attended, and the morning session made that more palatable to the general public. I'd like to commend our CAO for a very straightforward presentation that was well-thought-out, and our CFO for putting together a budget that looks to the future as well as holding the line on tax increases now. I believe the format and presentation was informative and easily understood by everyone, and I'd like to commend them. I also attended Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting, where we had a speaker, John Droop, spoke to the committee about community investment possibilities. Area Director Grace McGregor and the Grand Forks Credit Union, Michael Strupoff, attended. We had a brief discussion on how the possibility of private investment in partnership with other agencies, be it city and the credit union, could possibly look forward to funding some, the possibility of funding new ventures in the city, but also maybe doing a pilot project for business retention, where as a community we could look at coming up with some investment funding to keep existing businesses here and expand them. So, there'll be some future discussions along those lines. In ending with the economic development meeting, I'd like to make the motion at this time for City Council to accept and endorse the branding initiative that was presented at the Committee of the Hole today, and we need to, I believe, endorse that and get on with it.
Adopt it.
Yeah, adopt it.
It is actually on the agenda, Ray.
Yeah. Do you want to make the motion now?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion. If Gary hasn't written it. All right, resolved that the council determines to support and endorse the recommendations of the Economic Development Advisory Committee with regard to the new branding initiative as presented by Story and Company.
Seconded by Gary, by Councilor Smith. Switching from this morning's format, where I was being a little more informal. Okay, it's on the table. Councilor Crowe.
Yeah, I'll support it as a starting point.
And I think we agree, it's an evolving process, but I also speak to the fact that I think it's a strong message, and one that it will give us a unique image to take forward to the community and to the rest of the province. Other comments?
I'll be supporting it too, Worship.
Okay, are you ready for the questions? There's no further comments. All those in favor? Congratulations. That's a hard one, because it's like throwing a party, and you're not sure if anybody's going to come. Good work. And Councilor Kendall, you're still on.
That's the end of my report. Thank you to council for endorsing that, and looking forward to it taking this city in a positive direction.
Councilor Crowe.
Okay. On February the 19th, I attended a Gallery 2 board meeting. They were busy preparing for the Masquerade Ball, which was fun, and I didn't get to attend, but it sounded like it was really fun. They now have an office space provided for BDAP, so they have, you know, a physical address and stuff, so that's kind of nice. Councilor Smith and I attended the Federation of Municipalities Community Sustainability Conference that was held February 12th to the 15th. It was pre-packed, a pre-packed few days. I took a lot away from the experience. It featured topics such as everything from sustainable neighborhoods, bridging infrastructure gaps, tools for climate change, ensuring water climate security, food waste division, wastewater treatment, a lot more. Some of the highlights for me were under smart growth, and I've looked at smart growth before, but not in the context of infrastructure and sustainability. So, municipalities are realizing that our conventional growth patterns are driving that unsustainable growth in spending, and whereas the compact transit-oriented development results in lower infrastructure costs, lower density, instead of our old-school development. So, Sustainable Cities and the City of Calgary gave an overview of the implications of alternative growth as it affects infrastructure costs, and it showed the benefit of that compact development, including the reduction in everything from greenhouse gases, air quality improvement, walkable neighborhood, and above all, well, transit development, as well as huge savings in capital dollars. They evaluated the additional costs that would be generated by everything when they looked at that, so roads, transit, water services, fire, all of that stuff, and this helped guide their decision-making process. After they gave their presentation, we broke into groups to map out two different development scenarios, business as usual, and then the compact and infill. I got to be, luckily, to be the business as usual guy, so I wanted to put like landfills everywhere, and anyways. It was a cool exercise, and enabled us to have a clear understanding how growth patterns affect infrastructure costs, and I think it would be a worthwhile exercise for council. It seemed that most small cities, we wait around for developers to come, and then we're happy to have development, rather than pre-planning the infrastructure. It would give us a good insight also into the challenges that staff face, and a better understanding of what we want our community to look like in the future, rather than other people dictating what it should look like. Interesting topic of the creative class. This was Dr. Richard Florida, and he was teleconferencing from Florida. His name's, okay, anyway. He pointed out that the shifts in the way we organize our cities are accompanied by shifts in the workforce. We've seen transitions from agriculture to industrial to creative, and he's got this term, which is the creative class, and that includes people in science, technology, innovations, entrepreneurs, artists, designers, media. In the past, communities, even ours, has focused on attracting industry, but nobody wants heavy industry, so then we think, we need to get some high-tech industries, but we need to change our mindset, because the biggest potential opportunities are in between the two. And only, this was cool, I thought, only 6% to 7% of Canadian workers are in the manufacturing, while 41% are members of the creative class, and only 33% of Americans are considered creative. I didn't say it, he said it. And the creative class has rarely experienced unemployment over 5% as, instead of what manufacturing and stuff faces. So, that was pretty cool. There was stuff on implementing a sustainability plan, how, you know, we can work using certain steps, and it ensures that the implementation of sustainability should be integrated in the way our municipality does business. And one of the biggest things I took away was how far ahead our community is in achieving some of that sustainability compared to other municipalities, including much larger cities. And that progress, I credit to our staff. I commend them for initiatives. It was kind of cool to sit there, and they're talking about, "Oh, we need to do this," and they're like, "Yeah, I'm already doing that, thank you." So, we also looked at the Canadian Infrastructure Report Card in Canada, and a lot of municipalities lack the ability to even start assessing the state of their infrastructure. They gave some examples, 30% of respondents had limited data on their wastewater treatment plants, reservoirs, and pumping stations. Large percentage had no data on the condition of their buried infrastructures. 41-plus percent for distribution pipes, 48% for transmission pipes. And while it's clear that all communities are trying to monitor their drinking water through rigorous testing, but they don't know as much about their buried distribution networks, and that remains a significant on-the-ground challenge. And just another touch on that is roads. 41.2% reported they don't have an inspection program for their roads, and most of this were well on our way, again, thanks to our staff. Climate change, there was a dynamic speaker, Robert William Sanford, he's the author of Cold Matters, The State and Fate of Canada's Fresh Water. He explained in terms we could understand, and by "we" I mean "me," the recent hydrological changes we're seeing, and how it impacts our communities. We've seen everything in the world lately, from flooding to heat waves, radical weather-related events such as Superstorm Sandy, the droughts and fires in Australia, and it looks like it's only going to get worse. And honestly, for me, it seems that when I think about climate change and global warming, it's just that, like honestly, I just, "Oh, okay, it's global. We'll do our little part, but it's just global." I now have a greater understanding of the specific effect that it's going to have on our community and our infrastructure. A common thread throughout the conference was the emphasis on water security and making the most of our water. We have to be creative when it comes to water conservation. Again, we're working towards that goal. And the last part was, the one I really liked was electric vehicles and infrastructure on the ground in urban and rural contexts. I'm trying to talk fast, because... I had a long talk with Rob McGregor, which is the Sun Country Highways Recharge Director for BC. You may have seen him on Global News, he's the car guy they bring in for Ask the Expert. There's only one recharge station between Asurus and Ferny, right? I know our staff has brought this, I think it was Sasha brought it to us previously. I'd like to look at it again. We named ourselves as a solar community, but, you know, I kind of looked at it and I thought, "Are we really going to achieve that?" I think a more realistic designation may be an electric-friendly community or area. Charging stations aren't that expensive. Both Councilor Smith and I tried to win us a charging station for our community, and I'm not going to say it, but, I don't know, somebody like myself might have actually had two votes in the, or two things in the draw, and still didn't get one. And a neat thing, an example would be that you put the stations in places that allow people to require and stay. So, I see an economic development. If it was downtown, people would eat, shop, visit while their cars topped up. There may even be partnership opportunities with Sun Country and/or Plug-in BC. I would like to, and I'm going to be bringing this up more and more, to see if we could get a regular transit system with stops around. And in the future, I'd like to see our cities becoming electric, and our transit system, which we desperately need, to also be electric. And right now, we're looking at branding, and this could tie in nicely. Rest, relax, recharge, in Grand Forks, in the boundary, right? And I did get some information to bring back to staff about lining pipes and without the ground disturbance, and maybe some cost-effective ways to be, so that's my...
Thank you, Councilor Crowe.
Much.
Councilor Smith, I like first.
So, we obviously attended some of the same things, but of course, we get different things out of what we go to. Unfortunately, I did catch a bug on the way there, and it laid me completely flat for two of the mornings that I was there, so I couldn't attend some things I wanted to. So, on the first day, I attended a plenary session in the morning where the Canadian Infrastructure Report Card was discussed. With the many figures presented, it was clear that while Canadian infrastructure is not in disrepair, it is at risk. Nearly 30% of all municipal infrastructure, based on a survey of 123 municipalities, is rated at fair to very poor. The four primary asset categories are drinking water systems, wastewater, stormwater networks, and municipal roads. The replacement cost of these assets alone totals $171 billion. The point that was driven home is that municipalities cannot afford these costs on their own. It builds on the argument that municipalities cannot subsist on the current grant system of funding employed by senior levels of government. Later, I attended a session called Storm Warning, which went into detail on the effects of global warming, particularly about its effect on the hydrological cycle, which is how water is circulated through the atmosphere. As the climate warms, more water is suspended in the air. For every degree increase in temperature, the water-holding capacity of the atmosphere increased by 7%, and that means a lot of water can come down in unprecedented volumes, and can cause severe flooding where you might not have seen it before. Also, high temperature answer on the increase, Australia had temperatures of between 52 and 54 degrees Celsius last year. If this trend continues in North America, some areas of the Great, of the Central Great Plains could become uninhabitable, affecting food production and forcing migration of people northward, so a lot of Americans becoming Canadians. One of the most important things we can do now is to habituate ourselves to conserve water, as it will become increasingly scarce. It was a pretty powerful presentation, and certainly supports our desire to establish residential water metering. I ended that day at a presentation on making sustainability work in rural communities. It spoke to internet connectivity being a key factor in making a rural community work in this day and age. Of course, with our fiber optic network, we have a real opportunity to be a leader in BC as we develop strategies around our asset. There was also discussion around energy efficiency and renewable energy. One thing that caught my attention was methane capture from organic waste landfills that can be used to generate electricity, so perhaps there's an opportunity here. The next day, I attended a plenary on creative communities. The presenter, as Councilor Crowe pointed out, was Richard Florida, and discussed the creative class and how they are revolutionizing the global economy. He showed how a number of factors coming out of the creative class will, quote, "spur a fresh era of growth and prosperity, define a new geography of progress, and create surprising opportunities for all of us." One of the biggest points was to have comfortable places for the creative class to work. Small communities like ours can be those places, as long as we have the digital infrastructure in place for them, which we, of course, do. Now, it becomes a matter of marketing ourselves to them, and I plan on actually picking up a copy of this book on the subject. I next attended a workshop on how to take... I next attended a workshop on how to take a sustainability plan and put it into action. And one of the things that came out of that was, the reason why some of these sustainability plans fall short or fail is because they're too ambitious, which is referred to as the vision gap, where there is no follow-through due to a lack of commitment. By using five distinct steps in every decision around a sustainability plan, those being vision, plan, act, engage, and manage, plans have a far better chance of success. In my work group, I met a gentleman who runs a website with over one hundred sustainable community plans, and noted that our SCP is also there. It's a great place to get ideas on how other communities are doing things, and how we can augment or, you know, augment our own plan with using ideas from other communities. The session was very engaging, I made lots of contacts. There were a couple other sessions I went to, but I ran out of time, I put on my suit, so I'll finish my report, and then I'll, I'll hand it in.
You can certainly visit that on other occasions as well.
Oh, yes, absolutely. We've got a whole, we've got a link to all the, all the sessions, all the sessions. So, you know, I've gone to a couple of them, just to pick up a couple of points that I was unclear of. So, both Neil and I have, have that available, and if any, any other councillors want that, you have to share the link.
So, it sounds like a worthwhile conference.
It was, it was.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of items. First one is the P-We tournament that's coming up. No one responded to that question in terms of whether we wanted to try and put something forward for the P-We tournament?
Is that the five?
Yeah.
I did respond.
Did you?
I'm, I'm going to make a donation as a city councillor of eighty-five dollars, and I challenge my other councillors to do the same.
So, you know, it was one of those odd things that's come forward at the last minute, but it really was the incentive of some local schoolteachers and schoolpeople that really pulled it together, and apparently it's a big event that's going to bring a lot of people.
Yeah, it might be a big event.
So, we have a bit of problem with our grant and aid policy that actually says that if it's supported by the regional district, then we don't support it. So, we have that in our grant and aid policy that we've dedicated ourselves to review, but in fact, it did get funded by, I believe it was Area E and Area C both supported it financially. So, at this point in time, Councillor...
I'm not saying worship to the, to the, again?
A thousand dollars from Area E, and I think it was less than that from Area C, but I would have to double-check on that, on the minutes. Anyway, I'm not sure what to do with this one, it got dropped in my lap at the last minute. Mr. Allen, and you?
So, the situation that happened at the last council meeting was, it was on the agenda, but it really wasn't a, a motion to, to, to basically deal with the, the request. The, the motion wasn't put forward to, to, to ask for the funding, but ultimately, it was kind of left with, I, I had made the statement that our policy, our grant and aid policy would support that. And then basically, it was left by council, there wasn't a motion to basically leave it there, it should have been a motion to simply, to, to basically follow council's policy, or it could be for, for council to open up for further discussion. It is a council policy, now council does have that ability to, to maneuver if they so choose, but ultimately, for staff, it'd be nice for us to get the closure on that, whether they want to, what position the council is.
So, what you're saying is we can break our own rules in a situation like this where it seems a reasonable thing to do?
You can, it's, it's one of those things that council reserves that right as part of their policies and bylaws.
Councillor Kendall?
I think that, you know, there's been a lengthy discussion on grant and aid and whatever terminology you want to put that in. I think that every group that comes forward to council deserves in some way or another funding, and, you know, they're, they're all worthwhile causes, is what I'm saying. However, until this council comes up with a definitive policy on how we deal with those requests, I'm really not in favor of, I guess for lack of a better term, cherry-picking one over another, because I think that it just sends a message that certain groups get some preferential treatment, if they get the funding, others don't, and it's a situation that I don't want to be involved with. Although I totally support what they're doing, I just think that we need to, to come up with a policy that we can deal with all of these requests in an equal and equitable manner.
Councillor Smith?
The, you know, municipalities struggle with senior levels of government in getting funding, and it's this grant program, where basically, it's a lottery. So, in our frustration, I, I don't think we should be doing the same thing, it's almost hypocritical to say, you know, okay, you get it and you don't, based on whatever arbitrary criteria might be available. So, yeah, I just, I'm, I'm not in support of that.
I remember where this was left at, that, that was in the information items of the last meeting, where I brought it up, but there was no motion to deal with it, right? And so, it appears still there is no intention to put a motion on the table. Is that what I'm reading?
Well, I'd like to put a motion on the table. If we can't take it from the city, why can't we each make a donation from the council down of eighty-five dollars each? Times seven, seven, seventy-five times seven is what?
I think they're asking for four hundred dollars.
They were asking for a thousand dollars, I brought to the table five hundred.
Five hundred, yeah.
Well, I'd be willing to participate, whether it's, whether it's through council or through my business, and I think that really that's where these organizations need to go, as people who think that they're worthwhile and provide a value to the community need to step up and support.
I understand, that's what our statement is for.
Yeah.
Is it not? A portion of our statement? That's my motion.
Okay, that's a motion that council be asked to, or committed to voluntarily? That council would be asked to voluntarily do that? Is there a motion required for you to ask council to voluntarily do that?
I don't think so.
I don't believe there is. Okay, so can councillors contact you after the meeting with their donation?
They certainly can.
Yeah, because I, I think it is a very worthwhile one, and although it was very quick in the way it happened, it is something that brings definite economic benefit to the community and, and activity to all of our businesses. Okay, we'll leave it at that. I'm going to, again, combine some regional items here, so I'll ask you to accept it all as my report, but the economic development, Regional Economic Development Committee meets tomorrow at nine-thirty. We're really struggling with where we're going with this at this point. We have a, to some of you that have been at the meetings, we have a, a number of things that we're cleaning up that are past business. One of these regional signage, we've got a variety of items in terms of the website, and some of those things to deal with, but other than that, we have no big projects on the table. And I'm not sure of the outcome of, of tomorrow's meeting, but I'm, I'm really wondering at the necessity of our meeting in the way we're meeting, that we could possibly be meeting on a project-focused basis rather than meeting just for the sake of regular meetings, which seems to be sometimes what we end up in. And I'm, you know, we've tried to balance this for some time between our activities and the local active group, and so I invite you, if you wish to attend that tomorrow, it's at the Regional District Office at nine-thirty, and it's open to the public. Question?
Yes, and I know we've discussed it in the past, but just for my information, maybe for the rest of council, what is our current commitment to the B.D.C.? I believe we...
Twenty thousand dollars.
And that was for fiscal year twenty thirteen, is that?
That's for the year coming up, our budgeted figure is about nineteen fifty, something like that. That's our contribution. The largest contribution by far is from Area E, Bill Baird. Christina Lake, you know, pulled out, for those that don't know. And so, we're, we're sharing it with Area E, is our other largest contributor, and Councillor Croft?
If you're looking at meeting for the sake of meetings, it doesn't make sense, but that's easy to solve, all you need is, it's a project. So, what, I guess I'll have to make a motion, and to ask you to take something forward to B.D.C. for tomorrow.
You could just tell me.
Light up the boundary.
Light up with, there is actually...
Electrical, like the electrical recharge stations.
Oh.
All the way through would be awesome, because they're all within range of electric vehicles.
I would be more than pleased to introduce that as a regional initiative.
And if they wa, I'll do up, I'll even show up at a future meeting and propose it or whatever.
For sure.
I'd like to see that, okay?
Good idea.
Sir, I just have one question, is, is it in the purview of B.D.C. to, if you're looking for projects, is there a mechanism, like should be, the EDAC committee has something that they would deem to be a regional project to bring that forward for B.D.C.'s consideration?
Absolutely, that would be the kind of situation that would be a spin-off from initiatives that we take that require regional funding and support, that's exactly what we're thinking we would do. Let me go on, there's a couple more here, but the Policy Review Committee is looking at the communication strategy for the regional district, which is who speaks for who and when, and how that's coordinated through the chairs and through the C.A.O. of the regional district. So, that policy development is underway, a communication strategy will be discussed this week at the meeting. Tonight, at the meeting that we're not at, will be discussion of animal control, and I really, I think we're missing a vote that we don't deal with it ourselves here, so I'm going to ask our C.A.O. to get that on the agenda for us to, to be dealing with, they're dealing with it there, and I deal with it at a regional level, but it really touches the lives of so many people within our community, that we need to take a, a serious look at the existing animal control bylaw, which is a regional bylaw, and look at what adaptations or changes that we might be suggesting in that that would work better for the city.
Because I understand, your worship, they're getting, they're getting breed-specific and prohibiting?
There are things on the table, none of those things have been passed, those are all being proposed.
No, but that is on the table.
Yeah, there are some really interesting things being proposed. Some good, some not so good, in my opinion.
Shih-tzus. I think that's one of the breeds.
No more shih-tzus.
What is it, Councillor? Here's what?
Your worship, you got...
Yorkies.
No, I have Lasso Aff.
That's it.
A Lasso Aff.
They're, they're...
They were targeting some dog named Chloe, which I don't think over there.
Okay, the final one is a regional project, and I want to keep you up to date on this, it is moving extremely slow, but we had a communications, a group called with a resource person, and what we're, the stage we're at is that he has developed an argument to take to the Ministry of Forests, to ask them, to ask us to apply, so it's a very convoluted process, but he, our resource person would develop an argument for why we should be invited to be a regional community forest. Once we reach that regional community forest level where we're being asked to, or being invited to apply, then we're all going to be part of putting that application together. At this point in time, it's really academic what we're looking at, we're looking at allowable cuts, and various kinds of other complications that are occurring in forestry right now, nerf holes, and all of that together is being managed by someone that Grace McGregor knew and invited to work with us, and found the funding to pay. And so, actually, it's being paid by the regional district through Grace McGregor at this point in time, the resource that we're getting from Ray Show. What we, what we hope to see is, within the next two or three months, that we would have a good argument put towards the government that would allow us to sit down and begin to talk about what parts of this region are important to the city of Grand Forks. And right now, I mean, we're throwing in things that have more than just forestry-related interest to us, we're looking at Travers Creek, Miller Creek, the granite mine up the north fork, there's a number of areas that are highly sensitive, and Area D, so that's Rowley Russell right now. And so, we're, we're looking at the fact that we're in this for the long term, and representing our community, we would like to see more community control over the forests that surround our community, and the natural resources that are taken out of it. So, again, I'm letting you know that this is as far as we've got, and as we get further into this, in terms of this request, I'll be putting it in front of council. Any questions on that? It's exciting, there is one other area right now that has a two-community regional forest, but nobody has really addressed the issue of dealing with a whole region as we are, so we're kind of innovative in that way. That's it for me. Any further questions on regional district or city business? Councillor Kendall?
Just for clarification, you mentioned earlier today at the committee of the whole vote, kind of the situation with Director Perapalkin, and the fact that the regional district is looking at some way to, I guess, let everyone know how that's going to be dealt with, or how long she's going to be away, or...
Yeah, the way it sits right now, she's away indefinitely, and there's no intention of the regional district to remove her stipend or pay, but it puts Rowley Russell, who comes into it, in this awkward position, where he's only being compensated by the meeting and his personal expenses. So, we are struggling with that at the regional table, and looking for a way that we can compensate Rowley for this interim period that we're going through, until there's some word, one way or the other, whether Director Perapalkin, Director Perapalkin is going to be returning now. So, I can't tell you any further timeframes than just that. Okay, a motion to accept council report, Councillor Rochigan, second Councillor O'Doherty, and that includes the regional district report. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, we are down to the asset management, multi-utility capital prioritization and design work, and we're hearing from our manager of technical services, and I would ask Mr. Allen to introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sasha Burner, my other technical services here, is to, to make a request to council for early budget approval, and I'll pass it over to Sasha to speak to it.
That's what it's coming back for us to approve.
Do we have to hear it all over again?
No, Mr. Mayor, actually, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, we, we discussed this today, the budget process, we discussed this on several occasions during the budget process. Basically, what we're looking for is if Mayor and council are, the motion would be before Mayor and council to approve us the ability to start the project early before the budget's approved, before the budget's finalized.
Right.
So, we would basically, in order for us to accomplish the project, the order of magnitude, we would have to start now.
Yeah, I understand that, and so we don't need a report from Sasha, and Councillor Wyers, I bet, has a motion.
I'd like to make that motion, that we proceed with the approval of the asset management for sound.
Councillor O'Doherty seconded. Discussion?
I just have one question that I should have probably asked this afternoon, the two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars, is that, that's part of the asset management plan, is the funding from reserves, or is it borrowing, or where does that come from?
It's borrowed, part of the borrowing, I don't know.
Yeah. Further discussion at the presentation today in detail? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? Great. And I think that's the kind of anticipation that we expect in terms of planning. Land use acquisition and disposition and leasing policy. The land use acquisition leasing policy is presented and we're being asked to implement upon the adoption of the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the, if I could just add that this is already before we give it to council as for some guidelines. And now we're bringing it forward as the actual policy that staff will refer to.
That motion? Counselor O'Doherty seconded. Counselor Rochigan? Discussion? Counselor Crogg?
Yeah. When I went back, I just need some clarification because it says here that, oh, disappeared. Okay, one second. I'll go back.
Go from there.
The chief, policy procedures, the chief administrative officer and staff will administer the acquisition, disposition, and/or leasing of lands that council deems to be beneficial or surplus. So then again, that would be at the discretion of council.
Yeah, if they, if they determine something surplus, and we don't agree at surplus, we can challenge that, but there's a process that they're going to be going through to look at that sorting and sifting of things we need and things we've just got sitting there.
And I did have a concern with point four. And I did bring it up before, that the city will not pursue other lands or develop its own lands on a speculative basis, but in accordance with the community charter to provide for stewardship of public assets of the community. And I'm not sure if that changed from the original, but I didn't particularly and don't agree with point four. I think the city needs to pursue whatever it needs to do to ensure the sustainability of our communities, even if it is on a speculative basis. So that was one, number four, I again still have issues with.
I guess, Counselor Crogg, the definition of what is speculative is somewhat subjective.
Is it speculative?
Speculative on my part.
And I don't-
Mr. Allen?
I think just to, you know, if I could, if I could help Counselor Crogg's concern, I think the biggest thing we would be doing with all of these things is bringing them forward to council for council decision. Staff will just basically be able to know how to do it now. This is really what the policy is going to do. Now, council can, you know, once we get into those discussions on, for instance, item number four, council may direct staff in a different direction, but at least staff will have direction on how to maneuver and bring it forward to council based on this criteria. I think this is really what we're looking at here, so.
Counselor Crogg?
But if through you, but if the city, if the policy says that the city will not pursue other lands on a speculative basis, then that, if I follow the policy, it wouldn't even come to council because the policy said it shouldn't come to council. Is that not correct?
Mr. Mayor, I think the, for clarity purposes, all land acquisitions and pursuing of any sort of actions on municipality-owned lands would be before council. All decisions pertaining to landhold that will be with council. Staff will not be acting on any decisions with council until they have approval from council to do so. So, and that will be done in camera.
Counselor Crogg, we're splitting a fine hair here.
No, it's a-
It's speculation. Because my mind speculation is just looking at the situation in future that pertains to a particular piece of property.
And I appreciate your vision of this. Mine is completely different. The, and the city manager said that for city-owned lands, and I believe that, but the way it says there, it says it won't pursue other lands for speculation. So that means properties that are not city-owned right now. So I would just like to see either change to it or it's struck.
And I think you brought this up before, that you think we should have a stronger business-
Correct.
-vision or whatever.
Yeah.
Mr. Allen?
So, Mr. Mayor, as part of this, we, you know, one of the things that we could look at from a city's perspective is what is our 50-year vision? Part of some of the things that we looked at from the councils, the ten FCM, we're looking at was what's a long-term vision or need of the city? What would be the long-term acquisition of property needs for the city? And that would come up in the future too, which would, you know, it wouldn't be speculative, but we may need to pursue lands in the future, but we would need to have a comprehensive study to determine, based on our growth patterns, based on our needs as a community, based on the trends, we would need to know what we're going to need for this community for 50, 100 years into the future. So our acquisition of land should be based off of a strategic direction that is set by council that would be done in a kind of part of our long-term sustainability plan or, or part of the long-term objective. And I think that that would be, I think that would potentially deal with the situation. I've seen other municipalities, they do this, they understand, you know, because they're going to be growing and they need to understand where they're going to be growing to. So I think that that, that situation would come forward, but I also see the council's concern. If, if this is a contentious issue and it's a showstopper, we can, you know, council can pass a resolution to exclude this component of the policy and we can pursue it down there. I mean, I think at this point for staff, it's, you know, this is, this is good fundamentals, but I can also see the council's concern under, you know, based on the point that the city will not pursue other lands. Because we won't pursue any other lands unless we have a strategic plan to pursue these lands.
Counselor Rochigan and Counselor Kendall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have concerns, no different than Counselor Crogg has. And with that being that this policy, I think, move forward without number four, I would like to move a secondary motion here to have number four struck.
Have what? Sorry.
Have number four, the one we're speaking of, struck on the policy.
And Michael, or Counselor Rochigan's looking for a second here on that? Counselor Crogg? Further discussion?
Definitely. I thought Counselor Crogg's issue was the few words that say that the city would not pursue other lands. And if that is the case, then I could possibly agree with that. But I think that, and maybe our CAO can comment on this, but the community charter, I'm sure, has some things to say about whether, what we could do in this instance and also stewardship of public assets is a pretty big phrase that would limit the speculation on our part. So I don't really see it being a big issue, but I think that if we're not allowed to look at other lands or develop our own lands, and sometimes we know what may be considered speculative, city council would have a far better understanding of why we would be doing something in the general public. So I wouldn't consider it speculative in all instances.
Counselor Crogg?
Yeah, just clarification.
Counselor Rochigan first, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's-
Yeah, just clarification. It wasn't just the pursuit of other lands. Along with that, it was the to develop our own lands. And it goes back to what I said earlier, that a developer can come in and say, I want to put this here, and then we kind of have to go to it. What if one day we want to sit down and say, you know what? Let's do it our way. And even if that involves some, some developing of our land before it's, and then put it out looking for developers. So I don't want to be restricted with-
And I don't see that as restrictive, by the way. Counselor Rochigan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in reference to Counselor Kendall's comment about the community charter, if the community charter is going to exist, whether or not it's referenced or mentioned here, regardless, if there's rules within it that pertain to this, we'll have to follow them with number four being in the policy or without it being in the policy. To me, it's a non-issue.
Further comment on the motion on the floor?
Item number, item number seven would be my last comment. And I like it and I believe in it. It says, support community organizations by providing lands that will be beneficial to the community.
Can I stop you for a moment? We've got a motion on the floor.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, never mind. It was that one. I was all excited.
Okay, are you ready for the motion on removing four from the policy? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's defeated. Counselor Crogg, you're on for another one.
Okay, let's try number seven then. Support community organizations by providing lands that will be beneficial to community as a whole. Now, it's just a statement, and if I had a community organization, I would go back to that and say, well, you said that you're going to support community organizations and I, this is beneficial to the community, so you have to provide lands. I would rather see it tempered to something that, you know, the city will consider supporting community organizations by providing lands on a whatever basis. But right now it just says that, so I could use that as, as an argument to say, well, you're not even following your own if you're not giving that.
I don't see it being read that way. Mr. Allen?
Again.
Mr. Mayor, the one thing in this policy is right, just as we have right now, we have the RFP out there for expression for the 7212 Riverside and along with the Wildlife Hall. This would be the evaluation criteria that we would use. So if we're, if we are, if council decides they want to dispose or lease a, or sell property that they own, the council would ask that a staff would have a criteria that we would pursue. So, so part of our, the evaluation criteria for staff, before we bring it back to council for the final decision, would be, we would use these nine different criteria in order for it to be evaluated. So we would bring that forward and say to Mayor and Council, we evaluated the RFP based on the fact that you decided you wanted to dispose some land or lease some land or acquire some land. Based on these nine different criteria, therefore, this would be staff's recommendation to council. Leaving it at that, council still has a prerogative based on the decision of council to vote it down or acquire the land, and that would be done in camera.
Thank you. I think it's a solid piece of policy and I'm not at this point interested in changing it. We have a motion on the floor to adopt it. Can I ask, did we get a motion on the floor to adopt this policy? We did. Counselor? Okay, yes. All right, further discussion on this matter? Question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Do you wish your-
Sure, because I want to develop.
Well, I appreciate your attitude of being more businesslike in terms of running a good business, Counselor Crogg. I do appreciate that. I think we do need to operate as good businesses, so having said that. All right, the next item of business that we need to deal with is the Visitor's Choice publication. We had the presentation today by Sandra Baron, and she's looking for the go-ahead in designing for us a full-page ad at $23.60 plus tax.
I think the motion and then discuss it.
Do you make the motion?
Yeah.
And Counselor? Counselor Wires seconded? Yes.
Yeah, just that there was discussion about the actual content and the look of the ad and if we're going to actually get input. Is it, the way that you just stated it was that she was just going to do it, but given our CAO had some concerns about what's on it.
Oh, okay, bad wording by me on that. I mean, she's going to present to us some with the layout prior to printing.
Yeah.
And we're also going to try and incorporate the brand information into this, so.
Absolutely. Just clarification.
On one topic, just to make, make you aware of it, that when Sandra was speaking about the designated publication for Visitor's Choice being the single choice, that decision is made by the Chamber of Commerce and the Visitor Information Center. And so should we wish to be part of that next year? I think it would be very useful for us to be one of the participants in deciding in our community on what we see as the, the single rackable Visitor's Information Guide, whether it's this one or any other one. But we haven't been part of that process and I think we'd probably miss the vote on it this year clearly, but let's do it next year to make sure that we, we are part of that. And so the question on the floor is to, to take out the one-page ad that would be designed and presented to us and as we discussed, would incorporate new branding material in that, that design. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. And have we, have we dealt with the branding issue? Do you, do you need this further item? Yeah, it was made as a motion. The, this is in front of me, a motion to accept as we dispose of. Counselor Rochigan?
Yeah, I call it, well, after a second, I suppose.
And seconded by Counselor Wires?
I would just like to point out, Mr. Mayor, that if there's any, going to be any decision made in regards to this Alex Antmaneko Canada Post letter, other than to receive and file, that I will have to remove myself as my wife is the local president of Canada Post. I would not want to be a perceived conflict of interest.
Okay, so the first item of business is a move towards the form, or the creation of new, smaller retail model post offices. And the direction is to receive for information. Is there anyone who wishes to go further with that? No, okay. School District 51, the scholarship program. Staff to advise the school district in writing before March 10th of any changes to the amount or criteria as per Council Policy 502. So we have actually a policy on this. Ladies Auxiliary Number 59, Royal Canadian Legion, agree the donation of the Wildlife Hall dishes. Council to direct staff to write a letter to the Ladies Auxiliary Number 59 advising them of the city's asset disposal policy and that staff is required to follow the attached. Counselor Wires?
Your Worship, can I have, can I have the CAO's interpretation of that?
Of that policy and what they're asked to follow? Can we give a second?
No, they're saying buy them from us?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The asset disposal policy was set up so that when we do run into a situation where we have surplus goods or we have things that the city doesn't need, no longer needs, or we might acquire when it comes into a, for instance, when we acquire the Wildlife Hall, we acquire some dishes. But we found that different parts of our organization would require to have, they say, for instance, dishes. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't recommend that they be disposed of at this point. We could use them over at the Fire Hall, we could use them over at, in City Hall, we could use them at different locations that we have. But when we do have assets that, for instance, like an older vehicle that basically has run life expectancy, we would follow the asset disposal policy. We would make, we would ensure that it's exhausted, it's useful life, deal with the chief financial officer on that, and then put it out there for a sealed, or sealed auction so it can be put out there so all members of the community have access to it so we're not being perceived that there's favoritism, so it's a sealed bid process. Thank you. Counselor Crogg?
Yeah, only a comment, which was that as per the policy which was attached, but I couldn't find the policy attached.
It's in your policy book.
But is it attached?
Apparently not. But we could, we could have that available if you want to review it.
I just thought it said it was there.
But our purchasing policy, we just dealt with-
That was land.
No, we did, we did deal with the general purchase policy, which is a matter of not resold.
Yeah, but it wasn't attached, is all.
No, I apologize.
It said it was attached.
The auditor general for local government, and this is a process to-
Your Worship, I'm going to-
Oh, oh, Miss LTK. The Auditor General for Local Government, and this is a process to, oh, missed Healthy Communities, Healthy Forests. The final report and the dialogue amongst communities, experts and citizens receiving information. Interestingly in that, they talk a lot about how we can put our resources back in the hands of our communities and individual forests. The Auditor General for Local Government creating their first annual service plan, and our CAO is going to be dealing with this, responding to the survey. Did you want to say anything further on that matter?
No, my worship, I think the one thing, Mr. Mayor, is that I have responded to the survey. We are going to be looking for some more feedback. I am going to be bringing this up for the briefing to discuss, once I understand the legislation a little bit more, I'll be discussing this with council, and we'll be basically preparing some information for one of the councilors to take to AKBLG for question period when the new auditor general is presented.
The AKBLG invitation, Friday, March 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in Castle Bar. This is the Columbia River Treaty discussions. It's a conference. If you wish to attend, there's been a move to, at the regional level, to focus discussions on that portion of the regional table that actually benefit from the Columbia River Treaty money. And so a number of us has asked that we get these presentations, that we not be forced to sit through them, because they really have no use to us, they're not giving us funds. There's only one or two programs that are crossover, and we do stay in touch with those crossover programs. And minutes from other organizations, I'd like to announce, and Counselor Smith and I have talked about this, that I've asked Counselor Smith to take the dear committee on, and on top of his other responsibilities. It's an awful lot, and I would stay on the committee with Counselor Smith, but I would like to see him chair it, and I'll work as a resource person to that committee over the next while. There were a number of reasons why I felt that was necessary at this point, and we're going to give it a try and see how it fits for Counselor Smith. Plus, I appreciate his background in terms of academics, and realistically, he would be to hear our ask. Integrated management we're expecting from him. So thank you very much, Counselor Smith. That completes the list, and we have a motion on the floor as disposed of. All those in favor? Vote, Carrie. Bylaw number 1947, Amendment to the City of Grand Forks zoning bylaw, number 1606 and 1999. This is a request for first and second reading. And I have a motion to, for first reading, Counselor Crog? Counselor O'Doherty?
Thank you.
Discussion? Counselor Crog?
Yeah, I did say earlier that I like the idea of going to smaller residential, and again, it goes back to everything I was saying earlier about sustainability and stuff like that.
I'm confused here. You're supporting this first reading?
Yes.
Yeah, it isn't, it's an infill move here in terms of.
Yeah, that's good for.
Okay. All those in favor of first reading? And a motion for second reading? Counselor O'Doherty, Counselor Wires? Discussion? Just pushes it to a public hearing. All those in favor? Carrie? Thank you. And the next item is the Rockswell Closure bylaw. Due to the technical error that we had to deal with, this has produced a new bylaw that we need to give full readings on, and so this evening, we are giving it first three Motion for Counselor, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, just a point of concern here. The one thing that we need to do is we need to rescind the existing bylaw and then give the, and then give the new bylaws new readings.
So I haven't done this before, but do we, the motion to rescind?
To rescind the bylaw?
One motion?
Yes, and then what we would do is, once we've done that, then we move into the first, second, and third reading.
So a motion to rescind the current bylaw. Counselor Smith, second Counselor Wires? Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote, Carrie. And now we need to go through the first, the three readings to put this back in order. So first reading, bylaw number 1931. Counselor Smith, second Counselor Roshagen. All those in favor? Second?
It's actually 1942.
Yeah, and should we not have discussion?
Oh, sorry. I don't even guess by 1960. Your worship?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You will be actually giving three readings to bylaw 1949.
1949, yes.
Did we rescind both, 31 and 42?
Yeah.
So both of them.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
If I could make the recommendation that council adopt the resolution that's before them, and rescind the bylaws as per the resolution, and then give the three readings as per the resolution that's before them? If that would help clarify the way that staff's kind of presented it. It would help clarify rather than.
Okay, so as presented, the rescinding motion, we're going to restate this? Counselor Smith, Counselor Crog?
Not seconding it. Because you're talking about rescinding not the first three, and I think that our CAO will put them both together, because they are.
We're adopting as presented by our staff? Is that correct?
Bylaw 1931 and bylaw number 1942.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, that's the motion. Counselor Smith makes the motion. Counselor Wires seconded it. Counselor Crog?
Yeah, I just need some clarification, and that's why I'm hesitating. I just like to support rescinding the bylaws. And are, is it tied to starting to give the first three readings for bylaw 1949? Because I need some clarification on that. So should I get clarification now, or do you want to do part of it, which is rescind the bylaws?
I'd like to rescind the bylaws.
It is part of parcel of the other, so that would answer the question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so then I, through you, just clarification, and I could be missing, I read like all these pages and it just becomes a blur. We had originally looked at the closing of the roads, and then, once we found out that there wasn't going to be that secondary entrance, then we shut that down, and we were looking at rescinding some other roads. When I'm reading this, it looks like the original concept of the road closure is back on the table.
There is a road that's being closed.
Okay, but it shows, when you go through the things, it shows that the area of concern, which was the original road closure. So which roads are we talking about? Because all the arrows point to the original, which is that offshoot that Mr. Danish had concerns about. So are we right back to the original square one that we're going to close that offshoot road? Because that's what it looks like with the arrows going, the Counselor Kendall is right on.
Yeah, actually, those show that traverse, the angle on the roadway is going to be closing, I thought, but the reality is, we're kind of leaving everything as it is.
Except for some internal roads, because we don't have another entrance road. We just, that would leave us with one. Does anybody read this? Did I just misread it?
Well, we should have an answer for you quickly here.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, the one thing I could answer to you is, no, we're not going back to square one. Bylaw 1949, the bylaw 1949, a bylaw to close and remove the dedication of roads shown on Plan 17928-29359, KAP 6795, and all District Law 534. SDYB has a map on the back of Schedule A that shows the proposed portions of roads to be closed. The proposed road to be closed is not the industrial park portion. Whole bylaw 1931 has the map that has that, that piece that was, technically was not correct. Is that right? Yes. If we looked at page three of the bylaw 1949 in your packages, you'll see that that arrow has been removed that you're referring to in bylaw 1931.
That's the old bylaw. That's the old one?
Yeah, just for, again, clarification. Yeah. But you just said page three, right? Correct?
Of bylaw 1949.
Okay, I'm just going down. I saw the one that showed two arrows. Now I'm going down, and I went page two, page three, and it's showing three arrows. So am I on the wrong page three?
I believe, Mr. Mayor, we're on bylaw.
Page three?
Schedule A, page three.
Yeah, Schedule A. Okay, I'm going to follow Counselor Kendall's advice and keep going. So 1942, or no, it was 49. Okay, I'll just keep going down.
It's page 82 of 88, and they lost your eye.
Okay, I'm going down, and I see, but that is not page three. And it's not Schedule A. Oh, it is Schedule A. Okay, bylaw 1942. So is it 49 or 42? Sorry for causing issues, but I just want to make sure that we're not doing weird stuff.
I think, Mr. Mayor, it's like, I think we're dealing with bylaw 1949.
Yeah.
Bylaw 1949, my agenda package has, I don't know if I have a different map than what's in the council's agenda package.
That's 42, so I'll go back up.
There's two maps.
Yes.
For bylaw 1949, you have two maps?
Page 87.
1931, and then we go to here, which would be the picture that goes along with bylaw 1949, I'm pretty sure, and it shows the arrows.
Page 88?
Page 88. My agenda's not. Oh, no, I have that.
Because it shows the arrows on 41.
None of the arrows of these three are the ones that show the road that Mr. Danish was concerned of. I believe these are all the internal form pretty closures.
Yeah, let's see, here's the picture. Now, like I said, it could be, yeah, it shows, okay, yeah, so it doesn't show the, okay.
So is that page 85?
Ah, I'm not sure what page it is. I'm okay now, I just had, I just had, oh, there's page numbers. I just had a minute to talk for a minute.
Please refrain from speaking on, let's get this matter underway.
So I was apologizing for a mistake.
You haven't stopped talking in quite a minute.
For my clarification.
Mr. Allen, this is the motion that you wish passed?
That would be, the council considers rescinding bylaw 1931 and bylaw 1942, and additionally, consider give the three readings to bylaw number 1949 cited as a Rockswell Closure bylaw 1949, 2013. Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is the bylaw.
Thank you. And could I have a motion for this bylaw?
Yes.
Counselor Wires? Counselor Crog?
Well, support that.
I'm afraid to ask for any further discussion.
No further, I did.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, we have rescinded the proper bylaw, and now we're looking at correctly first, second, and third reading of bylaw number 1949. First reading, second Counselor Smith. All those in favor of first reading? And second reading, 1949, Counselor Smith, Counselor Roshagen, all those in favor? And third reading, Counselor Wires, Counselor O'Doherty, all those in favor? Okay, thank you very much for your patience. And we have no late items. We have questions from the public in meeting. So you get to come up and ask questions? Or you can yell them out from there, but we just.
I've just been trying to follow along this first one, so.
Welcome to Grand Forks.
Yeah. No, today I have no questions.
Roy, anything from you? No. Les?
I'd like to talk to Mr. Crog about what we reported on, but I think we have no questions.
Okay. And a motion to adjourn. No moves.